We have the mic, thank you. We have until 11:30, so we have a lot of time for those who would like to share. Edward can start us off, it looks like, and then anyone else can share after. Thank you.
Good morning, brothers and sisters. Oh, perfect. Right in my mind, thank you. So, just as a way of introduction, I'd like to just go through a little bit of each of the summary for each of the sessions. There were four sessions that our brother shared with us last weekend. And really, there's much of the word that's now, we cannot summarize everything within the next 40 minutes or 15 minutes. And encourage everyone to go to the Northern Chinese Church website and go and read, not read, but watch all the sessions that our brother spoke. There's so much from God's Word that was spoken to us that really, the purpose of God's Word is not so much to educate, but it's to transform. If at the end of the day, we read the Word of God, only the thing we know is that we obtain additional knowledge. That is only a small fraction of what God desires from His Word. His Word is living, and therefore His Word ought to live in our lives, and therefore it ought to transform our lives. If we find ourselves that we are in complete alignment with the Word of God, we praise God for that. But oftentimes, we find that the Word of God brings us to adjust our lives to be conformed to the image of the Lord Jesus Christ, and that is the purpose of the Word of God. So, as I go and quickly give a summary, I'm going to try to not give too much so that the brothers and sisters can share. One thing I'd like to encourage everyone, whether you were here for four sessions last weekend, or you're here for just one of the messages, you are not, no one is required to share all four sessions, all four messages. So if you were here just for one message, I ask you, as I go through the summary, that lift up this before the Lord, that perhaps the Lord has some words that He wants to speak through you, through that one message that you heard. Because I think the Lord speaks to every one of us, and that it could be just, not even the entire message, but it's just a portion of that message that has moved into your heart. And so I encourage you to meditate and consider that, and share to the brothers and sisters, because it is the Word of God. And I know that the Lord will use each one of us to speak His Word this morning. So, for session one, so the entire theme of the conference or the special meeting was "Run with Endurance, The Race That Set Before Us." That's Hebrews chapter 12, verse 1. If you remember, those of you who read through Hebrews, and if you haven't read, Hebrews 11, just the chapter before that, right, is the, it's the names after names of believers, those who follow God throughout their lives. And those are what they stated as being the crowd of witnesses, and when we come to chapter 12. So, it is kind of a combination of both chapters, as our brother was sharing, starting from chapter 12 of Hebrews, that the first thing, as we acknowledge, is that God wants us to run a race. There is a race to be run, right? We, our Christian life is not a passive life, it's an active life. You don't run by sitting down, right? You don't run by thinking about running, you actually have to move. You have to do something, you have to progress through that race. So that's our Christian life. And I'm not sure many of you, many of us have thought or pondered throughout our Christian experience, how much we have moved forward in this race. And I think there was a great encouragement from our brother to cause us to focus on this theme, that as we come before God, and we say, "We are followers of the Lord Jesus Christ," what does that mean? It means that where He goes, we go with Him. So there is a race, and the Lord certainly, He is in the same race, and He's the one who leads us, but we are called to follow in this race. So in session one, in Hebrews, it speaks about to lay aside every encumbrance and the sin which so easily entangles us. It is common sense, right? If you're going to go to a race, and if you actually plan to do well on that race, you don't plan to bring that, come to that race with two luggages of, no, 30 pounds luggage on each hand, and with a 40-pound backpack on your back, right? You can still run, but you probably won't go very far, and certainly you won't go very fast. And so the runners, and if you look at all the runners, right, whether professional or not even professional, if some of you are in school, and you, that's maybe you do the track and field, you try to have the slightest shirts and the lightest shorts that you can have, and your tennis shoes has to be the slightest tennis shoes you can find, right? Because everything matters. Every gram, every, you know, pound that is in your body matters. So you don't want to carry anything that is going to slow you down. And that is, it is wonderful how God uses the illustrations that He uses, right? The Bible has many illustrations talking about, you know, the bride and his, and the church as the bride. He speaks about, you know, this marriage, union of marriage, that speaks about Christ and His church. There's a lot of different illustrations in the Bible, and this is a wonderful illustration that often, this is one of my favorite ones, right, is the, is the fact that there is a race, and as we run this race, that there are certain steps, just like any runner, there are certain steps that we need to follow if we are to run well. And the first one is to let go of encumbrance. And our brother mentioned about three burdens. Just, I don't name the burdens, and I hope that the next brother or sister, as you come up, maybe you have a burden to share about those three particular burdens. But the first one is the burden of sin. The second one is the burden of old self. And the third one is the burden of law. And our brother was saying, of the three burdens, the largest one, you'll think is the burden of sin, but he actually said, most likely for many of us, for most of us, the burden of self, of self, of self-life, is perhaps the largest and the heaviest of the three burdens, right? So, as he, we went into the second message, it speaks about, first, you had to prepare yourself to run, so you had to let go of all the weight, of all the extra baggage that we are carrying. But then, in the second message, speaks about, okay, now you have to begin to run. At some point in your life, we have to start this race. And how do we start the race? And our brother speaks about is the crowd of witnesses, right? How did they begin their race? And it's the fact that they began the race because they're able to see the God who is not visible. He's able, they're able to see the unseen. If we are to claim that we are followers of God, and that we had given our lives to God, God has to be as real and as visible to us than this very podium that I'm holding. Otherwise, how am I going to follow a God that I don't see, I don't know, I don't know where He is? So the reality of the spiritual realm ought to be as real as the physical. Because the fact is, the physical is the only one that's temporary. The spiritual and the realm of God is what is eternal. So if the only thing we know is temporary, guess what? Our reality is actually off, because what is real is eternal. And so our brother talks about just the, some of the saints in the past, speak about Cain, Enoch, and Noah, that they saw something. God spoke to them, they knew this God who spoke to them, and they followed. They followed, they went against the tide. They did things that nobody would do in their time. They did things that no one, they were even ridiculed for what they were doing. But they were the ones who would see the God who called them, while everybody else only saw the work they were doing. So, then we come to the third message, and now we have started running, but how do we stay on course? Now, I mentioned this many times before, because I just love this passage, and that this, this is a race of endurance, right? So, 100-meter dash, you're just a straight line, right? For nowadays, the record-breaker is like just, just lasting 10 seconds. In less than 10 seconds, they are able to finish the race. So it's quick and straight, you can't miss, you can't go off the course too much in 10 seconds, right? But endurance, a race of endurance, is a long race. And it goes, and there might be a little, small hills up and down, but there are curves everywhere. You don't have a long, 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 20-mile straight line. You go through curves. And you actually begin, and by the time you start running, you don't know where the end is, because you cannot see the end. You just know you're going the right direction, and that's endurance. And so, how do we stay on the course? As believers, how do we do that? Are we heading in the right direction? Do we even know we are heading in the right direction that eventually will lead us to the finish line? How do we know that? And that is really what our brother was sharing to us, that this crowd of witnesses, that they went where God called them to go, not knowing where. But even though they didn't know where they were going, they, in their, God has given the vision to them that they could already see what the finish line was going to look like, even though they didn't know where the finish line was going to be. And I think we need to embrace this idea, embrace this, really, what God has spoken to us, that we don't know where God will lead us in our lives, but we know, because God will tell us what the end will look like, through His Word, in the book of Revelation, right? But even in our lifetime, if the Lord does not come while we are still here, even in our lifetime, the Lord has given us a goal, and that goal is, the Lord will lead us there. But we need to embrace the goal that has, God has given us. So that is the crowd witnesses of Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, Moses, all these people who traveled. These are all people who traveled, right? Abraham left his house, his home, and traveled to a distant place. Moses traveled for 40 years. And they all knew God's desire. They all knew what the end was going to be, and they just faithfully followed, not knowing when they're going to be there, how they're going to be there, or where even that place might be. But they were faithful to God. So that's how we stay the course. And our brother says, is by testing our faith, right? Is so often in our lives, and maybe I started sharing too much, and some of you may have this burden to share, but this, the message number three is, is about faith. It's about testing faith, and that God will test our faith. It's not that He might test our faith, or to some people He will test our faith, that there is no faith unless it is tested. And God will test our faith. And that's, no, I just want to leave there for session three. And then lastly, the last session on Sunday morning, it was fixing our eyes on Jesus, the Author and Perfector of faith. And it speaks about that we have, you know, we let go of the encumbrance to begin the race, we have set our eyes to begin the race, we have seen the vision of stay on course, and to have our faith tested. And then lastly, how do we finish the race? Because you may know the direction, you may know exactly where God wants you to go, it doesn't mean that you're going to go to the end, right? All the marathon runners, they probably know where the end is going to be, even though they haven't seen it, but they've seen the course enough, they maybe ran and tried a few times, they know what the end is going to look like, they know where the end is going to be. On that day, are they all going to finish the race? No, they don't all finish the race. So knowing where to go will keep you on the course, but arriving to the end is how the Lord will lead us, so that we actually, He's the one who enables us to finish the course. And so I won't go too deep into that, but he mentioned about the four things, the four promises of God, that we ought to be persuaded, right? It's a very interesting word, to be persuaded, to be convinced of something. But that is the promise of God, that God will persuade us, that God will convict us to a point that those promises we know, because God said that. Doesn't matter whether the circumstances indicate that those promises will happen. But because God said, we can let go of the circumstances, say, because God promised, I believe. It is not conditional promise. It is not based on what we feel, it's not based on what we see, it's not based on what happens now, it's not based because things are good, so we, I believe in those promises. When things turn out not so good, we don't believe in those promises. It doesn't rely on any other external factors. It only relies on God, who gave those promises. And so, I encourage brothers and sisters to, those who are led, to perhaps share a little bit on those four promises as well. Because I was greatly edified in this, in this, the last session, because it's such a reminder that God is God, and doesn't matter what we think. Doesn't matter why we, when we look at the world, and we think the world is in chaos, and we think everything is just, no, not the way it should be. And then you come to God's Word, and you realize, God promised, and He is God, and that's all that matters. He's sovereign, He's supreme, and when we trust in Him, we know He will do it, not because we have done anything to deserve it, not because there's anything that we're able to assist Him. He has, He does not need our help, He only needs our belief. And, and so I hope that we can focus on that this morning as well. So that's all I'd like to, as a matter intro, and there's much more to share, so I'd like to ask if there are any brothers and sisters right now who'd like to come up here to share.
Hey, good morning, brothers and sisters. How's everyone doing? We were voluntold about 10 minutes ago, so I just grabbed my Bible. No. While Ed was sharing, I originally did not plan on sharing, and this will be really short. But while I was sitting in the back, let's go ahead and turn to 2 Timothy 4, 4:1-3. I'll pull it up here. So, many of you, maybe you're thinking whether you should share or not. Let me share this encouragement with you. I think I just gave you the wrong one, so it should be 1 Timothy 4, I guess. No, I was right the first time, sorry. I had it on my phone, I don't know, I just, I just started there. Okay, 2 Timothy 4, verse 1 through 3, out of the ESV. "I charge you in the presence of God and of Christ Jesus, who is the judge, who is to judge the living and the dead, and by his appearing in his kingdom. Preach the word; be ready in season and out of season; reprove, rebuke, and extort with complete patience and teaching. For a time is coming when people will not endure sound teaching. While with itching ears, they will accumulate for themselves teachers to suit their own passions, and will turn away from listening to the truth and wander off into myth." Let's pray really quickly. Father, we had a special service. You're here in the, the anxiety of exhaustion from running races is here presently. Lord, the, the nervousness to share, the nervousness to, to express what you're doing. Lord, would you, would you shatter those things? Would you release those things? Or would you touch our hearts this morning as the Word is there? Because there's coming a time when no one will want to hear the truth. A time is coming where hearts are growing cold, Lord. It says also in Timothy. Lord, and there are many cold hearts out there in the world, Lord. So help us now to find bigger and strengthen you, at the sharing of your Word, that it would bring clarity, that it would bring an understanding, Lord, and you would just embolden those to share, Lord, this Sunday. Lord, and that they would be like oracles of God, that they would speak, Lord, and it would be a delight to us. In Jesus' name, amen. All right, so our first scripture, we're going to go back into Romans 8:35-38. This one, I've got a tab for, bless God. All right, so our brother shared, as we're turning there, we're going to go to be in Romans 8, we'll kind of read the end, about being fully persuaded. So I want to start with that scripture, and then I'll share a little bit of my experience from this weekend. And we're going to pick up in Romans 8:35. If I can find it. Okay. So, "Who shall separate us from the love of Christ? Shall tribulation, or distress, or persecution, or famine, or nakedness, or danger, or sword? As it is written, For your sake we are being killed all the day long; we are regarded to be sheep as slaughter. No, in all of these things we are more than conquerors, through him who loved them. For I am sure, that neither death, nor life, nor angels, nor rulers, nor things present, nor things to come, nor powers, nor heights, nor depths, nor anything else in creation will be able to separate us from the love of Christ and Christ Jesus our Lord, the love of God and Christ Jesus our Lord." And then let's read our third scripture here, it's going to be Isaiah 40:26-31. And hopefully, if you're following along with our Bible study, you should have seen this a couple of weeks ago, it's here at the end. So you might say, we might say, "Well, we're running the race, but I'm a little tired. I'm running the race, and honestly, having a brother up here tell me to run the race is actually just making me more tired and less wanting to run the race." That was me this morning, full transparency, I came in very irritable, I was tired, we were setting up. I get it, I understand, I had many conversations this morning actually about this. The question that came back to us as we get to this scripture, that came back to me by the Holy Spirit, is, whose strength are you running in? Who are you relying on? Because I think we can find in ourselves, we can pull up posts on social media, we can pull up posts, and we're like, this is all that's happening. I can pull up research on decision fatigue, attrition, focus attrition, all of that is scientific, all of that is fact. All of that is a real thing, all of that, we can say, "I'm just tired because life is busy, I'm tired because work is difficult." My work week started in a new position with one of my employees letting me know that after a 15-year run, he's, he's kind of done, followed by a 45-minute call with an angry mother shouting at me, 45 minutes. During COVID, I was on the other end of two domestic abuse situations, one on Zoom. I was trying to help a student while his brother beat his girlfriend behind me, behind them. And we can look at that, and we can say, "I have every reason to be tired." But then the Holy Spirit asks, "Whose strength are you running in?" And I think this is key to, and paramount to with the brothership, about running the race, enduring to the end. So let's read this out of Isaiah 40:26-31. Here we go. Actually, we'll pick up in 25, here in the ESV. "To whom then will you compare me, that I should be like him?" says the Holy One. "Lift up your eyes on high and see who created these." I like the NLT because it talks about the stars there. "He who brings out the host by number, calling them all by name, by the greatness of his might, and because he is strong in power, no one is missing. Why do you say, O Jacob and Israel, my way is hidden from the Lord, and my right is discarded by God? Have you not known, have you not heard? The Lord is everlasting God, the Creator of the ends of the earth. He does not grow faint, he does not faint or grow weary; his understanding is unsearchable. He gives power to the faint, and to the, to him who has no might, he increases strength. Even you shall faint and be weary; a young man shall fall exhausted. But the Lord, but they who wait on the Lord," here in 31, "shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings like eagle; they shall run and not grow weary; they shall walk and not be faint." So I, this is my first time leading the discussion groups for the special service. Only two years ago, I was just some random guy, you know, showing up on a Sunday for a special meeting, and then I was in one of the groups with Yi, and we were leading. And I just want to share a couple of things that came up as I close here. One of them, one of the sisters said, "The burden that the brother missed was the burden of busyness." You know, we were talking about the law and about the faithfulness of the Lord, and I think busyness is a big part of this, this Isaiah 40. And even this morning, Joshua, he prayed, because one of our brothers was like, "I'm old," you know? It's a lot getting set up, you know? But the reality is, even young people will grow faint and weary, especially those who are back in school, and you're working, and you're career people, some are getting ready to retire, some are career, just trying to do their best. But the, the Lord reminds us in that, that there's strength. But there's, the promise here, or the if-then statement, I think, that we find in Isaiah 31 is this, "But they who wait for the Lord shall renew their strength." So I think that comes back to that question, whose strength are we running in, right? Are you waiting on the Lord? Are you pausing in the Lord? And the second thing I would like to share about this, the first scripture that we shared about, about being fully persuaded in the love of the Lord, two things. The first, I was always told, when you're at the pulpit, to always show from victory, but the reality is, it's the victory of the Lord, not us. One of the, the great failings from this weekend that I realized is, we had our brothers and sisters from Bumbi here, and I took for granted that they would be here. So I continued groups and lunch, and I just kind of did business as usual, and some people got left behind. And then I realized in that moment, we take for granted these moments, or I do, at least, I don't want to speak for you guys. There is such a delight to be found and spending time with one another. There's a delight to be found spending time with the Lord and with His bride. And, you know, I think one of the things about being fully persuaded that I learned this weekend is learning to delight in each other, not taking for granted that people will just be here, right? Oh, it's a special, I, I will say, I started the special service exhausted, and to me, it was just another weekend. That's how I started, it's just being transparent, it's just being honest. But the Lord still uses those moments. But I think it comes down to just, part of that is just, we just sort of like, it's Sunday, it's a special service, we know there's going to, I know it's going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there's going to be food, we're going to, you know, whatever. And people get left behind, because we've just taken for granted that they'll be here. And that really brought me to Revelation. And that really brought me to a revelation, just spending time with people, what a delight that is. Being able to be here with y'all on a Sunday, what a delight, you know. So that's part of being that fully persuaded. And I think the second is this, and just, this is actually my last point here. "Love takes work; hate is easy." I know, that sounds like a great talk, you're like, "Oh, that's a great talking point, yeah." Post that on social media later, no. Yesterday, I was driving home, and I went through Cocoa Beach, and there's been a massive political rally. Not talking about politics here, I just want to point some stuff out about that. The amount, there was like four, I don't know, hundreds of people, it was a lot. It was a lot of people, and the very angry signs, you know, stuff that we're so used to seeing. Christian and non-Christian alike in attendance. I'm just trying to like drive home, right? I've seen a lot of angry signs lately, and I'll share this in a couple of Sundays from the Gospel message, about wrath, the God's wrath. And all that stuff is so common, right? Like if I was pulling like a card pack, right, they're just kind of, I'd just throw them away, you know, it's so common. Being angry about stuff is so common. But loving people, being fully persuaded that, A, we live from a place of being loved. You cannot be any more loved than by the Lord than you are right now. Literally cannot. You do not need validation from other people to know that you're loved, you're simply loved, the Word tells us so. And the reality is like, as the brother shared, taking that information and walking, making it a reality in our life, is how we live without that hindrance. And the second is this, maybe as just kind of a conversation, to question to kind of run this morning is this. "Am I just pouring out hate because it's easy? Vitriol, poison, ugh, you know? Oh, but I'm justified in it, sure, you're..." So the Book of Romans says, "The gospel reveals the righteousness of Christ." And Second Corinthians says that we are the righteousness of Christ. Righteousness is rare, love is rare, hate is easy, love takes work. Thank you so much.
Good morning, brothers and sisters. You know, I always have to thank the Lord that before I stand up here, that many times, things that haven't happened yet, they do happen just out of like a good flow of things. So I appreciate, you know, how Brother Ed starts, and then Brother Tom over here follows up, and it's good encouragement for each and every one of us. I'll be honest, the past few years, we've heard this topic many, many times. And whether it's from Brother Sue, who spoke about this topic, it's from Brother's son, if it's from CFC or DBCZ, we've heard this topic several times. So last week, before the start of the sessions, I prayed to the Lord, right before it started, "Please, Lord, don't be the same exact kind of like thing that we've been hearing." Which fortunately enough, it wasn't, because what Brother John did a really good job was, he made this topic very, very applicable to us, and broke it down very, very well. In the first session, Brother John stated that life is full of burdens, that every session, every season of life brings its own challenges, every circumstance adds its own weight, and therefore, we need to set aside our burden that tangles us in our lives. Originally, I was going to share about a more generic idea about the season of our life. But last night, I was trying to drift into sleep, the Lord's like, "No, you have to add your own personal testimony to this." So that is what I'm going to share. So at the beginning of our lives, when we're going through elementary school and high school, there's always going to be different burdens, right? Especially with school, it's going to be if we're going to make good grades, or if we're going to do well on exams. So for me, I remember in fourth and fifth grade, we had this huge like oral presentation that we had to do. For me, back then, I was terrified of sharing anything. So I remember that I did not do any of the research. I got in trouble for not doing any of the research, and I was behind on what I needed to share. Then in sixth grade, when I was in middle school, I had to give a book report in front of my English class. And me standing here, I had basically talked so softly that the buzzing of the fluorescent lights was louder than my voice. So they had to close all the lights, and then my teacher told me, "You got to speak louder." And I'm like, "I'll try." In high school, I was in IB, and IB is international baccalaureate. It is advanced classes to gear you towards going into college to be able to test out certain classes, like English and math and stuff like that. I tried my best to take the exams. We took both, during the junior and senior year of high school, we took the AP exams and IB exams, and supposedly, if you take these exams and you do pretty decent, you can test out of courses in college and be ahead. I did not receive good grades. I did not do well in those classes at all. And, you know, I had another setback, because when I entered college, most of my friends, they're like, you know, half a year or a year ahead, and I'm like, I'm with everybody else again. And I'm like, "Okay, Lord." In college, when you go into college, you're trying to figure out, you know, again, life, you know, if you move out of your home, and you go into university life, you may have to find a new church. You may have to still find what kind of degree you want to take and do well in your classes. Finding a new church has its own challenges, because then you have to listen to the Lord on where to even go for church. I, again, did not do well in my college years either. So for my testimony is, in the first year of college, I went to University of Florida. I chose all the wrong classes. One of them was Chinese literature class, taught in Chinese. And I don't know what maybe thought, "Oh, a freshman can do that," or even me can do that, because my Chinese is not that great. And then, you know, trying to take like biology and chemistry for my biology bachelor's, again, that was really, really difficult for me. So in the first year, I did not do well again, and I was, you know, made with a tough choice of, should I stay in University of Florida and choose a different degree? Or if I should do the hard choice of leaving the University of Florida and coming home here in Orlando? In which, out of much consideration, I chose a harder option, which was to move back home. But my grades weren't even that good, to the point where it was even lower that I couldn't go to, go straight into the University of Central Florida. I had to go to Valencia College. And I had wrestled with the idea of, "Okay, I'm going to University of, sorry, I'm going to Valencia College to bring my grades up, but how come I seem, it seems like I am like, again, slower than everybody else?" So my original idea was to finish a semester, bring my grades up, and go straight into UCF. However, when I went to the counselor over there, they were like, "You're one semester off from an AA degree, might as well stay." So that's what I did. From there, I went to UCF, and I tried to finish the original bachelor's I wanted to do, which was Bachelor's of Biology. And I also still encountered with a lot of difficulty. Even though it looks, I'm very studious, with like highlighting different things and try to learn everything, but it takes me two or three times longer to understand and memorize anything. And to be tested from there, I didn't do well either. So again, more burdens in our life, right? One sec. So then after you obtain a degree, then you have either one of two choices, right? Either you have your bachelor's degree, and then you are able to go straight into the career that you want, that the Lord is leading you to, right? Or second idea is, you go back into school, obtain a master's, graduate, or doctorate degree, right? But even then, it has its own difficulties in life. And then from there, even throughout that time, we're not going to mention about dating life, trying to start a family, getting married, starting a family, and then, and having kids, right? I'm sure all the parents here can attest that having children is also its own difficulties. However, again, we need to lay aside our burdens that tickles our lives, and we need to start, before we can even start this race. So I'm not going to go into the burdens of sin, self-life, or law. But we'll go into the last two sessions, which are the third session and fourth session. The third session is how we should stay on the course of the race, which the answer is to have endurance. First Peter one seventeen, one seven states that, "The tested genuineness of your faith, more precious than gold, that perishes through it, is tested by fire, though it may be found to result in praise and glory and honor at the revelation of Jesus Christ." So to undergo endurance, the Lord tests our faith. Therefore, God refines and purifies our faith through testing, and then our faith needs to be tested, in that we must embrace this time of our faith being tested. Therefore, as mentioned, the Lord tests our faith by three main ways. First is the test of obedience, which is coming from Hebrews eleven seventeen through nineteen. Then we have the test of dependence, which is from Genet- sorry. First is the test of obedience, which is Hebrews eleven seventeen through nineteen, which shows that Abraham's faith being tested when the Lord asked him to offer his only son, Isaac, as a sacrifice. Then the test of obedience, of dependence is Genesis thirty-two twenty-four to twenty-six, which shows Jacob's faith being tested when Jacob wrestled with God, and that he realized that what he really need was God himself and not God's blessing. And lastly, there's a test of endurance, which is Numbers twenty, verse ten to twelve, which states Moses' faith being tested throughout his life, when he was being taught by God, being led by the God, and endured forty years in the wilderness with people who were constantly looking back at the glamors of Egypt. Therefore, he was barred from entering Canaan due to a moment of frustration, when instead of speaking to the rock to provide water, he struck the rock. In which, the test of dependence, the Lord has taught me this quite a few times. And I hope that, you know, every one of us are able to recognize these three different tests. But let me share a little bit about the test of dependence. As mentioned before, I've had many times where I struggled with school. In one of the times, when I was finishing my Bachelor's of Biology, I had two different classes in which I needed a ninety percent or higher to pass, in which it's impossible for me to do. But in one of the times, I don't know, the class was just kind of crazy, but it was organic chemistry two. And I remember it was like a ninety-two, I think, is what I needed. And somehow, I didn't get the grade. However, the professor curved it, so that we did, I would have did wind up getting the grade. So bless the Lord from that. On the second one, I had another course where I needed a ninety-four, which is again, impossible. But because the professor who was teaching was also our biology advisor, he recognized that my first exam was okay, my second exam didn't do too well. My third exam, I was getting better. And this fourth exam, I did better than the third exam, and he saw that progress. So he decided to give me the last five percent, and I was like, "Thank the Lord." And in that instance, I had to depend on the Lord, because if I didn't pass that class, I would have to find another degree. But thank the Lord that even though this professor was not a Christian, he did not know my circumstance, but he still helped me pass, in that when I graduated and I walked over, walked during graduation and saw him, I just said, "Thank you." Because he, and I didn't have to tell him, "Thank you for all this that you've done for me." It was more like, "Just thank you," because knowing in my mind, he helped me finish my degree. Another time that I had, I had the same exact issue, where I was not sure if I was going to pass or not, was when I was in my physical therapy assistant degree. We have these practical exams where not only do you have diagnostic exams, where you take tests and stuff like that, but you have these practicals where you have to perform certain things, and based on that practical performance, you either pass or fail. Two fails means that you are out of the program. Unfortunately, for one, during my neurology practical, I failed one time because I panicked. And I was like, had too much anxiety, and I wasn't sure how to do something, right? So I had to come on a Saturday with a friend of mine who also did not pass, and had to redo that neurology practical. And after that, we had finished performing that practical, both of us had to stand outside, and the professors took, I want to say forty minutes to an hour, just to deliberate. And of course, if you're standing out there for that long, now all you're going to do is start pacing. So I started pacing, and I prayed to the Lord, "Lord, if I pass, great, I can continue on. If I don't pass, that's difficult, because in that fork of the road of passing or not passing, if I don't pass, that means that I would have to look for a different degree to move on with my life. Yes, it'll take a lot longer, but, you know, in that moment, when I prayed that same prayer like five times, I was like, "If I don't pass, I will obey wherever you lead me." And that's something we have to experience, is that dependence on the Lord. And I don't know if any of us have even experienced that yet. But it's something a blessing that you can experience, because then you truly can have faith in the Lord and trust in the Lord, and then the hardest thing is to obey the Lord in wherever he's going to be leading you. And sometimes it may not be where you originally thought, sometimes it may be, "Oh, I'm going to stick with this other way." Lastly, we have the fourth session, which talks about how we are to finish the race, which is fixing our eyes on the Lord. And to do this, we have four promises, right? The first one is, nothing can separate us from the love of God. Second one is that God is faithful, and that He will not allow us to be tempted beyond what we are capable of. Third one is, man, with man, things are impossible, but with God, all things are possible. And lastly, fourth one, there's, God will never leave us or forsake us. In which, I would say, the fourth one really spoke to me, because it, with how much trust I put in the Lord, I really saw that God never, will never leave me or forsake me. In times that even if Satan is trying to tell me that I can't do it, I can always have faith in the Lord that I can do it, because I know the promise that, from Hebrews thirteen five, or also Deuteronomy thirty-one eight, that the Lord will never leave me or forsake me. And that's why I can have such strong faith in the Lord that He will never leave me. And even in any kind of decision that I make, I know that the Lord is always going to be with me. So I appreciate how applicable, you know, what Brother John had spoke to us. You know, I hope that we're able to listen, if we haven't listened to the four sessions yet, I do encourage you to listen to them, because out of all the speakers that I've heard on this topic, I really believe that Brother John broke it down very applicable for us to learn from, and to apply in our lives, and look forward to how to run faithfully in the race of endurance.
Eleven forty-five, okay, I'll keep it, keep it quick. Hi, everyone, I'm Zach. Been coming here for a couple of months, this is Zette, my wife. If you haven't met us yet, please say hi. Yeah, I appreciate everything that was shared before from Brother Ed, Tom, Alex. We actually only made it to last Sunday to be able to come up, or to be able to join in and get to hear the session. But actually, even just hearing from these other sharings, testimonies, and hearing more about the race, it really got me thinking about just some of the things I was sitting on over the last week. Last week, we were asked, "How do we keep our eyes fixed on Jesus in this time?" And one of the things that I was thinking was like, "Oh, are these things I believe more than just in my head, but in my heart and my life and understanding?" And as I was thinking about it, and thinking about what Brother Ed was sharing earlier about endurance race, and what does that look like? I am not a racer. In high school, if I could get under a ten-minute mile, that was great. And I'm probably slower now. I have never done an endurance race or a marathon. I have probably run a marathon collectively in my whole life. I've maybe run twenty-six miles. But I was thinking about it from friends who I know who have run and just what that experience was like for them. And it started with desire, the, the, the hope to run a race, the goal to run a race. But that wasn't just what carried them through, it was actually the discipline of training afterwards that mattered. As I was thinking about what does it look like in our relationship with God, I was meditating over this last week of what are other things I've heard about running? Oh, it's really hard when you start, but eventually you start getting a runner's high. I have never reached that runner's high myself. I don't know if it's true. I think it's a lie. But if it's true, then this metaphor is great. When we are walking with God, there's probably gonna be a lot of challenges with that in the beginning. And that's where the discipline comes in. Eventually, there is that point of desire, there's that point of joy, that point of, hey, this is actually something where I'm really feeling good about this, actually. And then I thought more about my friend's running experience in the marathon, where they hit that runner's high and then it was hard again. And then they didn't want to do it. They were in the middle of the marathon and they're like, this hurts. I barely, I'm not breathing enough, I feel dehydrated, it's hard. And again, that's where the discipline comes in. But one specific story I remember from a friend who ran his first marathon, we'll call him Blake, because that's his name, but I didn't ask him about that. If you're ever in California and you meet a Blake, he might be my friend. But for him, something that was really helpful was seeing someone else who was running and they're kind of running alongside each other. He's just straight up, hey, you're my hero, we're doing this, we're doing this together. And actually, having someone else who he just met on the run was an encouragement for him to continue. The reason why we started coming to this church, Suzette and myself, is we have faced a transition. We have moved here from Hawaii. And that's one of the things that I think is really a disruptor to what life looks like. Believe it or not, moving to another state and across the ocean is actually a disruption. And that's something that disrupts rhythms, that's something that causes challenges. I think many people here, if you're a student, you have recently just faced a transition going back to school, right? For those of you who are parents, you have also faced a transition with your kids going back to school. And with all the things that come with that, as students, there's classes to be had, homework to be done, that cute person who sits across from you, who you're like trying to figure out how, who to talk to. For the parents, it's the same thing. You gotta think about schedules, you gotta change your life around that. And these transitions are the things that I think right now I've been really feeling, I think my wife's been really feeling. And the reason why coming here, I think, has been helpful is just we get to see other people who are running the race. That's something that really drew us to this church and that's something that's been really helpful. My encouragement comes from hearing other people share, which I love that this church does a lot. But even then, I think that there are times where it can be discouraging, where you look at someone else, you're seeing how they're running the race and you're thinking, wow, they're running so much better than I am. They're doing so much better. Sometimes it's an encouragement to be able to say, hey, this is someone who I really love running alongside and this is something that I want to see them do well. And then if they are doing better, you're like, oh, that's something I can strive for. And just my encouragement for you, just in my meditations and just by going over the word, over this last week is, for those of you who find that encouraging, keep receiving that. And actually, if there's anything that you can share out of that could encourage other people in the race, share out of it. God may have some really cool things with that. For those of you who don't see that encouragement, let this testimony be an encouragement to you. I, right now, in a lot of ways, feel like I'm struggling. When Brother Tom was sharing about like, oh, it's so easy to hate. I was thinking like, man, there's so many times where I don't feel like I'm actually growing in the fruit of the spirit and love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness and self-control. There's times where it's really easy for me to feel like, ah, man, I'm just angry, I'm just tired, I just don't want to be anywhere but on my couch. Which, just so you know, that is kind of my default setting of just wanting to be on the couch. So it doesn't mean I'm angry all the time, it just means that I like my couch. But as someone who is struggling, I want to keep running the race and I'm getting encouragement by being here and running that. And if that's somewhere where you're at, I hope that that's something that you can be encouraged by. So my encouragement for all of us is to continue sharing, continue running the race and continue seeing how other people are doing it in other ways that we can show other people we're doing it. Thank you.
So I don't know if you guys were there for session three. We don't usually ask you to do this, but go ahead and pull out your phone and I want you to Google blind runner. Go ahead and do that, because I don't have the picture from session three last week. So blind runner, if you were there, session three, then you know what I'm talking about. So my job is a physical therapist and this last week, I worked with two blind people. And it was very interesting because they became blind after they've lived in their homes for several years. And so thankfully, they know where everything's at, but if you move something, then they don't know where things, that, where they are anymore and then they get lost in their own home. So when you pull up this, you know, an image of a blind runner, not Blade Runner, which is a movie, but blind runner, you'll see a guide. And if it's a Paralympic picture, you'll see someone with a vest probably, or at least a sign on their chest that says guide. And the other person is the actual runner. So between them, there's a tether and it's like a rope with a loop and another loop. And so one person, the guide is holding the loop and the runner is holding the other end of the loop and it's kind of flexible. The reason why I really liked this imagery that Brother John mentioned was because almost every aspect of the, this metaphor, yeah, there you go, is, was really accurate in describing our run in life. So session two was seeing Him who was unseen, session three, run with endurance the race that is set before us, and session four, fixing our eyes on Jesus. And session three was based, focused on Hebrews 11:27. By faith, Moses, he left Egypt, not fearing the wrath of the king, not fearing the wrath of Pharaoh, for he endured as seeing Him who is unseen. So the guide, so one thing is, all the runners in the race actually have blindfolds on. And it was interesting to me because Brother John pointed out that everyone is, has varying degrees of blindness, which is true. Like, one of my patients was like, oh, I can see shadows, I can make out the difference between a really bright object and a really dark object, but I can't make out your face. I don't know if you have a beard or not, they said. I was like, oh, okay. And then, and, but then other people can see other things or some people can see nothing at all. But to me, I don't remember exactly what Brother John said about that, but to me, it, what is true is that all of us have sin and all of us are blinded to what's spiritually going around us. And it's really hard, or, so no matter what, we're, we're all the same. Even though some have been Christians longer or you just became a baby Christian, but we all have this blindness around us, in us. And this guide, in order for the blind runner to run the race, can you imagine? So I was helping the patient walking around their house, just walking and, and then I was trying to get him to use a walker outside because he really wanted to walk outside. But with a blind sweeping cane, you can feel the ground, but your balance is not great. So if you use a walker, you can use the wheels in front of you to feel where you are. But he kept hitting the grass and, so it's like, when you watch a little kid or, or new person play Mario Kart or something, they're, they're like running into the wall. But it's a little sad after it happened a lot, right? So he, he kept going into the grass and then he got frustrated. Well, Jesus as the guide, the, the blind runner has to listen to the guide. And what's interesting is that the, the runners, you have to be quiet to listen. And so someone was saying like distractions in our life, encumbrances in our life when we run the race. If we're so busy, the busyness of life, if we're so busy, so distracted, we can't be quiet enough to hear God speak to us, Jesus to guide us on this race. And then, so the question is, is your life quiet enough to hear Jesus speak with you? Speak to you? And then the tether to help us, because can you imagine, Brother John said this, can you imagine if a guide tells you with your eyes closed, okay, walk five degree to the right? Like, okay, what exactly is five degree? You know, and then if you miss by one degree, you could run off the sidewalk into the street. I'm remembering my patients, so that's not safe, right? But when you're running this race, you're going in a oval or ellipsis or whatever that shape is. You guys in school know that shape, I don't remember. So that lap and if you just, you're running fast, right? So if you go off by a degree, you can be off really far. So you have to listen to Jesus as your guide. But also, you have to be able to feel His, His guidance through what Brother John said, the tether is like the Holy Spirit. So when you become a Christian, God gives you the Holy Spirit within you and so you use the Holy Spirit to listen and to feel what, how God is guiding you. Sometimes words are not enough, maybe God gives you circumstances where you have to feel some hardship or some testing is what we said, to be able to guide it, be guided back on the path. Now, if you've ever run track and field, the lanes are really small, like persons width, right? So you can be really thrown off course if you're not paying attention, not only to hearing, but also the tension on the tether. Maybe after church today, you guys can try this, it'll be fun. So optimal, so, okay, there was, I watched an interview of one of the famous Olympic runners. They said, for optimal performance, performance, both of them have to hit the ground running at the same time, or you'll throw each other off. There was one picture where the lady was like two meters from the finish line and the guide, or one of them tripped and then they lost the race, two meters, they lost a bronze medal. So they have to hit the step, the ground at the same time. Ideally, it's like your right arm and your left arm, like, you know, moving at the same time and your steps at the same time. So the timing and the speed, everything is the same. But to be able to do that, you have to be really in tune with what Jesus is telling you to do. Can you imagine? I really think we should try this later. So, and then the last part was that the guide has to be faster and stronger than the runner. Or else, the runner will drag the guide and then the guide's useless, right? So I thought that was interesting. Jesus definitely is stronger, I mean, he's God, right? So he is capable. And what's interesting is he's hundred percent God, hundred percent human, so he knows our failures, he knows our weaknesses, he know, he knows where we're gonna fall. And so he, and he's better than us because he's a hundred percent God. So he knows exactly how to pull us, what commands to say that we will listen. But I think for us is, are we, are we listening and are we feeling his tugs? And, let's see. So we cannot run this heavenly race alone, because remember, we're all blind, to what's spiritually going on around us. And then, running this heavenly race is God's calling for us in life. So it's not just enjoyment of life, which is good, I mean, God wants us to enjoy what he's created, but it's running for a purpose. Enjoy things along the way, but not let it hinder you or pull you down or slow you down in this race. But keep running the race and that is God's hope for us, is to run this race towards, towards Jesus, with him guiding us through. So, I mean... A minute, oh, that's really loud. Let's just take a minute or so to silently pray and reflect on what God has spoken to us today through the sharings. And we can have that slide up if you need that slide to remind you. So let's just pray silently and reflect on what God has said to us today.